I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for May 17th, and please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our roll.
Belzak.
Here.
Clistic.
Present.
Here.
Gustafson.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Shauer. Sullivan.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
We have a quorum, takes us to item five, which is questions and comments, and announcements of a general nature. Again, this is for people who may not want to wait till the end of the meeting to share something with the council. It could also be something that's agenda-related. Does anyone have anything they want to share at this point? Ms. Painter, I think you have your hand up over there. Come on forward.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I am Linda Painter, and I am the Forest Preserve Commissioner for this district in southeast DuPage. I'm here to congratulate you and commend you for supporting the monarch butterfly population. The population has been diminishing for many years because the lack of milkweed plants. People have been destroying milkweed plants and using pesticides and herbicides, and the monarchs, only, the monarch caterpillars only feed on milkweed plants. So if you don't have milkweed plants, the monarch caterpillars cannot survive. And so I have been very instrumental in the forest preserve getting them to grow more milkweed plants. And I personally, I raise little monarch butterflies, caterpillars, till they turn into butterflies. And last year, I let 45 butterflies go. And it's, it's a really daunting task because they eat and eat and eat, and they eat tons and tons of milkweed. So I am willing to help anybody that would like to try to do this. It's important to, you know, some people will let nature take its course, but birds and other, other, bigger insects eat the eggs and eat the tiny caterpillars. So when they lay their eggs, I bring them in and put them in a safe environment until they hatch, which is absolutely an amazing process. If you've never seen it, there's a YouTube video called, um, the amazing, it's called "The Amazing Lifecycle of a Monarch Butterfly." It's about five minutes, and if you haven't seen it, take five minutes and watch it. It's truly amazing, and to see it in person really is. So if there are any caller, or anybody watching there and would like help in trying to raise monarch butterflies, my email is linda at lindapainter.com. You can email me, and I'd be more than willing to try to help you set it up. As far as from the forest preserve goes, we have a couple things coming up that I will make sure that you all know about it. We want public input. We have a master plan in the process for Waterfall Glen, and I'm sure that many of you have visited Waterfall Glen. And if you want your opinion known about any kind of upgrades or changes relating to Waterfall Glen, we're certainly going to be looking for that. As soon as the survey comes out, I'll be happy to let you know that you can pass it around and put it on your website and things like that. And then also, we're also going to be looking for input. We have, we own Willowbrook Wildlife in Glen Allen, and I'm sure if you've lived in here, lived around here for years and years, and as a kid, you brought any kind of injured animals, wildlife, to Willowbrook Wildlife. And we're going to be doing a huge expansion program there, and we're going to be doing, getting public input for that also. And so when that comes out, I will be happy to let you know that, too. Thank you, and thanks for saving the monarchs.
Ask Linda a question.
Linda.
Yeah, Linda, a quick question. Prior to the formal meeting starting, there was a question about mosquito abatement programs, how they might affect the monarch butterfly population. We don't spray in town, we treat catch basins. Is there somebody on your staff that could help us answer that question?
Certainly, I can get back to you.
Okay.
But we do, in the forest preserve, we do the same thing.
Okay.
The mosquito spraying does affect the monarchs, and we do the same thing.
Yeah.
They, they monitor where all the larvae are.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, if you could send, that'd be great. Thank you.
I will.
Yeah.
Linda, I have a question for you for a change. In regards to animals, every once in a while, you know, once a month or so, we get injured animals that people report, whether it's raccoons, birds, ducks, so on and so forth. What is the best way for us to handle that, you know, as residents and/or public works?
Well, for starters, make a phone call to Willowbrook Wildlife, and they'll tell you, they'll ask you questions about how, what type of animal it is, where did it come from. Generally speaking, birds that fall out of their nest, if you can pick them up and put them back in their nest, that's the best thing, because the mother will take the best care of the animal. Certainly, it's going to be fawning season, so there's baby fawns going to be coming out. They are very interesting. The mothers will leave them for like six hours at a time, and those, if you see a little tiny baby fawn, unless it's running down the street or in the middle of some, you know, real dangerous place, leave them alone. The mother is watching. It's amazing that they, just most of the time, you leave them alone. But if they're injured, then that's when you want to take them over to Willowbrook Wildlife.
Linda, maybe you can give us, send us some of this information, and we can put it out in our direct connect, just as an advisory for people.
Sounds good.
Yeah, because I had a call from a resident, they had a dead raccoon. And their question is, you know, I talked to them, what do they do now with this dead raccoon?
Wrap it up in a plastic bag and put it in the garbage. Or bury it. I was told once to do that to a dead deer in my yard, bury it, like, yeah, in January, that was going to happen. That's what the health department told me, honest. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to approval of minutes. I'd like a motion to approve the May 3, 2021 minutes. Motion by Alderman Vaughn, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments regarding the minutes? If none, the roll.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Clistic.
Abstain.
Gustafson.
Aye.
I have five ayes, one abstention, and one absent.
The minutes have been approved. Takes us to receiving of communications. Any of the Aldermen have communications they'd like to share? If none, I would like to share a communication. Actually, it's not a communication. Saturday, I had a, Kathy and I were invited to attend the gala fundraising event at Kingswood Academy here in Darien. It was a beautiful event. I've attended these before, at the Bobek Seven Signature Room. This time, it was held at the school. Anne Marie Garo invited me to attend, and she asked me to submit something that could be raffled off or auctioned off. And I came up with the idea of auctioning off mayor for the day. And when I got there that night, they told me that was the only live auction item, and that was one that they hoped to make a lot of money on. So I was called to the microphone about an hour into the program, and I was asked to give a talk. And I talked about Catholic education, how it's impacted my life, and I also talked about how when we take care of other people, God takes good care of us. And I related that story, and I also shared what we would be doing for the child whose parents bid. After I made my speech, and I did tell them that whatever child was selected, they'd probably run city council much better than I would, so, and they all found that kind of comical. But Tammy Karami started the bidding, and the biddings went up to 1,000 to 1,500 to 2,000 to 2,500, and eventually, it hit $3,500. And so this couple bid $3,500 to do mayor for the day. And I went and met this family and thanked them, and in the process, I had another family come up to me and tell me that they would be willing to match that $3,500 if I would do a second mayor for the day. And I agreed, and I met with them and got their information. Well, before the meeting, the evening was over, I had four parents who each paid $3,500 to have me do a mayor for the day.
Wow.
We raised $14,000. Now, I only spent $11,000 to get elected mayor, and people are paying $14,000 to have a child sit in this chair. And I was informed by Tammy that that $14,000 was the largest amount of money they have ever made in a live auction. So Kathy and I were really very happy with that. Now, just to let you know what I promised them. I told them I would like to have the child come in with the parent, one of their parents, like in the later afternoon. And what I'd like to do is have Chief Thomas organize a tour of the police department, and possibly have Sergeant Squares bring a police car over and have the child see what the inside of a police car looks like, and maybe even take a ride. I also would like to have them possibly visit public works and see that facility over there.
Not the facility, just the trucks.
Yeah, the trucks, not the facility.
Fine facility.
And then that evening, they would attend the city council, and I would ask Clerk, Clerk Rigona to swear them in as mayor for the evening. They would sit in this chair, and they would run the meeting with some direction from yours truly. At the end of the evening, they would have, we'd have a framed certificate for them saying they had been mayor for a day, and I would invite them to walk with me in the Fourth of July parade this summer. So those, that's what I've promised, and like I said, there were four families that were willing, and I think we could have got a fifth, but I kind of got lost, so people couldn't find me. It was a wonderful evening. We have a teacher who was here tonight, and I forget your name.
Laura Richardson.
Yeah, and Laura's been teaching there for a while. And Lauren, Lauren is very much an environmentalist, a conservation person, and when I shared with her what we were going to do tonight for the monarch butterfly program, she wanted to attend, and I told her, please do attend and be a part of the discussion. There's a lot of wonderful people over there. Kathy and I made some friends over there that we will, I think we'll have for a long time, and it really is a great school, and I'm very proud of the efforts the people made. And I really feel good to know that by allowing a child to come in and experience government for a day, that we were able to raise $14,000 for the school. So that's my story that I wanted to share with all of you. Mary?
That's great. I mean, that's, having done a lot of charity events and auctions and stuff, good for you. Like you said, it was probably best that you disappeared or did a Murphy's Duck, because you might have had six or seven, you'd have the rest of the year tied up. So, good for you.
You know, it's funny, Kathy and I got our, our food was free, our drinks were free, and I always feel a little guilty, but when I raised $14,000, I didn't feel guilty.
Yeah, that's, that's awesome.
We kind of hold you to that every year, though.
Yeah, I know, it's going to be an annual thing. I did, I think we all received communication, but I wanted to highlight that the Darien Chamber of Commerce and the Hinsdale South High School Foundation are partnering to do a charity golf outing this Friday, May 21, at Carriage Greens. It starts at 3:00 with the shotgun start. They're still taking donations, they're still taking sponsorships, and also people who want to register to golf. So you can visit www.darienchamber.com for, to sign up for this event. It's a great opportunity to support our high school. Scholarship money is given out every year. In fact, the high school has graduation tonight. It already happened at Hinsdale South, and they will be having an award ceremony tomorrow where some of those scholarships will be given out. So try to support it in some way.
Thank you, Mary. Brian just informed me that in case of a tie in voting on an item, the student will be able to break the vote. All right, that takes us to the mayor's report, and the first item under the mayor's report is a resolution supporting restoration of LGDF revenue. Whereas municipalities across the state of Illinois provide essential services to their residents that include public safety, support, transportation, and storm wastewater infrastructure, and community health services, along with many others. And whereas the state of Illinois has maintained a long-held agreement with municipalities to support and invest in these local services through the local government distributed fund, or commonly known as LGDF, which includes the collection and distribution of tax revenues on behalf of municipalities. And whereas since the state income tax was adopted in 1969, state government has shared a percentage of total income tax collections through LGDF with municipalities on a per-capita basis in lieu of a local income tax. And whereas these shared revenues have been significantly reduced by the state since 2011, from 10% to now 6.06%, and whereas municipalities depend on LGDF dollars, which account between 10 and 20% of a municipality's operating budget, to lessen the burden on taxpayers and reduce their reliance on property taxes. And whereas Governor J.B. Pritzker has proposed that the fiscal year 2022 state budget include a further 10% reduction in the amount of LGDF revenue distributed to local governments, and whereas this revenue reduction has been proposed at a time when municipalities are continuing to spend additional funds on the COVID-19 emergency response. And whereas in addition to LGDF cuts over the years, the state has also reduced municipalities' share of the personal property replacement tax and increased sales tax collection fees, while cities and villages have had to fund skyrocketing pension costs, which account for substantial budget increases each year. And whereas those municipalities with fewer revenue sources, such as retail business, with higher equalized assessed property values on property suffer the most and will be forced to explore increasing property taxes or cutting services and further LGDF reductions. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Darien urges the General Assembly and the governor to restore LGDF payments to the promised 10% rate, so municipalities across Illinois may provide basic levels of service and lessen the reliance on property taxes. I would like to ask for a motion to approve that resolution. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderwoman Sullivan. I would like to tell you that, so you can see how this hits home, that last year, last fiscal year, Darien received $2,393,776 in LGDF dollars. That if LGDF was cut by another 10%, the city of Darien would lose $239,000. And basically, so people get a better understanding, this is your money that we collect, that we send to Springfield, and Springfield doesn't send it all back. And in effect, to pay for police services and infrastructure improvement, you're getting taxed twice, because the municipality still has to pay for those services. And right now, LGDF comprises 14% of Darien's budget, just to let you know a few figures on that. Any discussion? And the vote.
Kenny.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Motion's been, or the resolution's been approved. It takes us to item B, under the mayor's report. A resolution in support of the DuPage Monarch Project and the enhancement and expansion of available habitat for monarch butterflies and other native pollinators. Whereas the city of Darien has adapted the maintenance of a parcel of land located near city hall and the police station to protect milkweed plants growing there. And whereas the Darien Rotary Club has passed an Operation Pollinator Resolution to work collaboratively with partners and protecting pollinators. And whereas the Darien Garden Club has pledged to be a partner of Operation Pollination and has joined DuPage Monarch Project as an associate member. And whereas the Indian Prairie Public Library offers hands-on pollinator programs in its Prairie Patch Community Garden and hosts community programs about monarchs and pollinators. And whereas the Darien Park District has established habitat for pollinators and butterflies at Chestnut Park, Birchwood Park, South Grove Playground, and the Darien Community Center, providing milkweed for monarchs to lay eggs, leaves for caterpillars to eat and grow, and nectar for the long journey south. And whereas the city of Darien is adjacent to Waterfall Glen, a 2,503-acre preserve with open land and natural areas, which are part of the local network of resting and feeding sites for migrating monarchs. And whereas many of the 4,000 species of native US bees providing critical pollination services, pollinating to food, ornamental, and wildflower species, have experienced significant decline. And whereas Illinois designated the monarch butterfly as the official state insect in 1975 and as a result of lobbying by Illinois schoolchildren. And whereas scientific studies point to the rapid decline of the monarch butterfly due to the loss of milkweed habitat needed to lay their eggs and for their caterpillars to eat, resulting from development, land management practices, and chemically aided agriculture in the United States and Canada. And whereas the population of eastern monarch butterflies declined by 26% in 2020. Whereas because the decimation of pollinators, including the North American monarch, which serves as an iconic species, has potential negative consequences for natural ecosystems as well as for human food production, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service reviewed the status of monarch butterflies in 2020 and determined they met the criteria for designation as threatened under the Endangered Species Act, but delayed federal protection at this time due to the number of species in greater peril. And whereas research by the Field Museum found cities can provide 15 to 30% of the milkweed needed to save monarchs. And whereas on a national level, conservation organizations such as the National Wildlife Federation and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service have undertaken efforts to reinvigorate milkweed and other nectar-producing plants to help restore monarch habitat in open spaces and suburban and urban gardens. And whereas the Mid-America Conservation Strategy has identified a monarch habitat restoration target of an additional 1.3 billion stems of milkweed by 2038, which will sustain a resilient population size. And whereas the Illinois Monarch Project has developed a statewide monarch conservation plan, calling for 150 million new stems of milkweed, Illinois' share of the Mid-America Conservation Strategy. And whereas because there are many different species of milkweed in the U.S., it is important to recognize that only native milkweed is vital to the restoration and survival of the monarch habitat in Illinois. And whereas DuPage County Forest Preserve District, River Prairie Group of the Sierra Club, the Conservation Foundation, and the Wild Ones of Greater DuPage, a native plant advocacy group, are encouraging communities to plant native milkweed and available nectar plants where appropriate. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Darien, DuPage County, Illinois, as follows. The recitals set forth above are incorporated herein and made part of this resolution as if set forth fully herein. The city council authorizes the city administrator to increase and improve available habitat for monarch butterflies and other native pollinators through the following actions: to improve and increase plantings of milkweed and native pollinator plants on city lands; to identify locations where native milkweed and nectar plants can be newly planted or incorporated into existing plantings; to create at least one monarch weigh station that meets monarch watch certification criteria; to install signage, I lost my place, to install, my computer jumped and I lost my place, excuse me.
Do you want my sheet?
Yeah, I'll get there again. To create at least one monarch weigh station that meets monarch watch certification criteria to install signage, near monarch-friendly plantings to provide educational facts about monarch butterflies, other native pollinators, and their habitat in order to increase public awareness and education, and also to make sure that we're not spraying anything in the, in terms of insecticide, that's going to harm the monarch butterfly or other pollinators. This resolution shall be in effect immediately upon its passage in approval by a majority of the city council. Motion to approve. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Clistic. Any discussion? While we're here, I'd just like to show you, I was given this book by Claudia Barowski about two years ago, and believe it or not, that picture is our milkweed area on the other side of, on the other side of the police department, and this is what it looks like. And I'll be more than happy to give you out the book. So I want you, and it's really a beautiful, beautiful plant, and it's beautiful to see these monarch butterflies on these plants. Any questions? And the vote.
Kenny.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Resolution's been passed. Due to the generosity of Linda Painter, I recently planted five milkweed plants in my backyard, and tonight, I have, courtesy of the Darien Rotary Club, milkweed seeds for all of you. Joanna, if you want to pass that down to Joe and Lester. And I think I need one, two, three, four, five over here. So. Go home. I think Linda will tell you to plant these in the little, start these off inside your house, and you've got to be careful, because the rabbits go after them, too.
I think we need one more down here.
You need one more? There.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Anybody from the audience have anything they'd like to add? Please come for me.
First of all, congratulations and thank you, everybody, for passing that resolution. I'm Kathy Street. I'm one of the founders of Darien Garden Club, which is celebrating our 20th year this year. I'm a past president, and I run the community service and outreach, outreach part of our club. I've watched and guided our club to become more and more environmentally focused. Many years ago, we converted a weedy parking lot island, these are ideas for all of you, into a wonderful butterfly garden at St. John Lutheran Church, where we meet. Many of our members have gardens certified by Conservation at Home Landscapes, it's Conservation at Home Landscapes by the Conservation Foundation. They're a great source and educator, so reach out to them. We support national and local environmental organizations, and to that end, we are active in the Illinois Monarch Project, signing their pledge, attending their summits. We're also, as the mayor mentioned, associate members of the DuPage Monarch Project. We pledge our support to Darien Rotary Operation Pollinator Program as well. As you can imagine, we are very, very excited to see this resolution, and for the mayor's signature also on the National Wildlife Federation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge. Thank you. Thank you for joining us in the fight to support the struggling monarch butterfly. You're in great company in Darien with volunteer organizations like the Rotary and ourselves, and public institutions such as the library and Darien Park District, who work together to put more habitat in the ground. We can pull our ideas, we can pull our resources and our energy, and really make a difference. With all the local support, maybe it's time for a Darien Monarch Project. It's my thought. That's a topic for another time and another meeting. So if I may, I'd like to share some of the exciting things going on related to the Illinois Monarch Project's plan and the possible roles for Darien. The most exciting initiative locally is the The most exciting initiative locally is the Route 66 Flyway Project. This is a plan to connect habitat throughout the state, north to south, along the Mother Road. Any habitat 33 miles either side of I-55 can qualify for that road. Thirty-three plus thirty-three equals sixty-six, so sixty-six miles wide up and down the state. Since we live right smack in I-55 corridor, you know, we have a good opportunity there to put more habitat. This habitat will provide milkweed and other blooms for the monarchs that migrate north all the way to Canada from Mexico in the summer. And the super generation that comes back flies all the way back to Mexico, and they need all kinds of food on their way back. So we have a real big opportunity here to green up that whole map on this flyway. Another goal, as he mentioned, is to plant 150 million stems of milkweed in the state by 2038. As people have pointed out, milkweed is a sole food source for the caterpillars, and the lack of milkweed has really led to some of the troubles. You may not know this, you may not know this or have seen this, but as Mayor Marquese pointed out, there is a milkweed patch, and he mentioned Claudia. She's not here tonight, she's had some health issues. But a few years ago, on her walk, she noticed this milkweed. Then she noticed it was sprayed, and it was dying. And she said, "What's going on here?" So she investigated. She found that the property was owned by the county, but cared for by the city. So she worked her way around, and she was given an opportunity, I believe, from you up there, to take care of this patch. She puts up signs there, she takes photos, as you know, and she collects all the seed at the end of the year. She takes that seed and she cleans it. She makes little packages that we hand out, and the rest of it goes to I.D.O., who also plants for the monarch. Meanwhile, she also heard about the mayor's Monarch Pledge. So she contacted the past mayor and continued with Mayor Marquese, and sending information to them, showing them the book and so forth. And she was, she wanted them to let you know how getting the city involved with all the rest of us would really help. Because of her efforts, I think we're here today. She continues her quest to guide the city by joining the Environmental Council, as well this past year. I'm here on her behalf, and she is very, very excited. I met with her personally about a week ago, and she gave me something to give to the mayor. So I have here a plaque, Mr. Mayor, that she made one of the best pictures from her book. So I want to present that to you, and I want to thank you all, thank the council, and thank all the other people here who work toward helping the monarchs. And I look forward to having us, this area, Darien, being a leader in all of DuPage. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Sylvia, send that to Mary Belmont. Thank you.
I think the importance of something like this is demonstrated by the fact that you have the park district, the Rotary, the Women's Club, you have all these organizations that are involved in doing this as part of it, and the city has kind of come late to the game, but we're very happy to be part of it. The other day, Dan, when we were talking about this, you mentioned some property where we could possibly be doing some milkweed plantings. You remember what we were discussing?
Some of it could be right adjacent to public works at this point, especially by the forest preserve there, so if we get some plantings, I'm sure a couple of the guys would be more than happy to, you know, kind of cultivate it and nurture it and bring a monarch. And so we'll just touch base with Linda to get the plants and the seedlings and, from one of the ladies back here, I'm going to go from there.
And I'd like to see our environmental committee take a leading role in this as well. I think, you know, that would be critical. Yes?
Well, I know Kingswood is private, but, hey, ladies, heard a little bit, but I was basically bringing in the big caterpillars, there's one, it's about time, because the schools could have a patch on all their, they could do the whole...
We'll get the schools involved. I've got a meeting with teachers from all the schools tomorrow at 3:30. I'll bring it up with them. Anything else?
Yeah? Oh. Dan, is there any way that we can somehow, over in the wetlands, in the Terra Hill area, do some of that?
I'm not sure, I mean, if it's a natural or a native plant, the answer is yes. I don't know if they could be in submerged waters, semi-moist, or they have to be entirely dry. So I'm not too familiar, just based on what we have out here by the police station, that's pretty much dry all the time, so I'd have to educate myself on it, Mr.
The Constitution foundation?
Yes.
Jim is a wonderful... The grain garden, that property is springy, go into our... I think it's going in all of our parks.
The parks, Alderman McGyver, excuse me, Sylvia McGyver's on the park board, so she could bring that message there as well. So we'll reach out and, you know, we'll see.
Label, make it...
Sure, we could even have schools participate wherever we decide to plant some, and again, I don't know what opportunities there are, but we'll take a look at it.
Wow.
Got it. Okay.
Here it is. Lots to learn.
Alderman Clistick.
Dan, there's a big plot of land on Nantucket that's full of grass that could use some milkweed potentially.
Those residents there did not want to take part in any type of natural native landscaping.
Not going to ask maybe again.
All right.
Look at the parks. Take a tour in July and they'll be in love.
Well, the city, the city is going to be, is going to, is going out for RFP over near, adjacent to the high school, just immediately east of Elm and just south of 74th. That piece of property there is basically a detention area, so our goal is to mitigate it and make it a native parcel. So there'll be plenty of opportunity for lots of different plans and see where schools can get involved and so on and so forth.
Once they're... Strong thing, ideally it's less... Less spraying, less, less, plant more, we less.
That's where our goal, right, that's what our goal was, to eliminate fertilization from that area and provide more native plants. And again, the hardest part is getting them established, usually takes anywhere from three to five years, is my understanding, depending on what you're trying to get.
On the corner of S-90 first sign, sign, that most signs.
Okay. Well, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Oh, one more.
So excited, because it's going on, this slight tangent, but I'm planting one more seed, as are also residents in Darien. Kind of just gives those turning up better recycling, you know? I go right by the Darien Community Park, and there's AB1 recycling bin, and there's over, and I know the only mom walks across the field to put the plastic water bottle in it. My idea, like everywhere in the problem is landfill recycle. There's choices connected to each other, going to make our residents about it. And none of our parks have that.
Well, you know, you're sitting right next to a commissioner of the Darien Park District.
So I'm planting the seed for everybody, and I just think it kind of all go hand-in-hand. Our citizens, our children, our staff, we're planting for the milkweed, which is amazing. We're planting natives with such, on supportive of our land, but we also have to think about our environment.
Totally, I think it'd be a great project for the park district. Okay, let's move on. I got a couple more items, real quickly. Those of you on the council, the elected officials, you probably received an invitation from the Darien Lines Club today, electronic application for the July 4th parade. I think Line Bill Christensen's heading that parade, and he's going to ask you to complete that and have that sent back then by June 23rd. And it's pretty easy to fill out. If you're going to be in the parade, please fill out, fill that out and get that back then as soon as possible. And just one other thing, about a week or so ago, we sent out this flyer on social media called "Darien Spring Fling." We have all these businesses that are offering special promotions in May and June as a way of encouraging people to shop Darien. And so I'm just holding this up tonight. If you haven't seen it, it's out there on social media. We're thinking we could possibly put this out in a newspaper as a one-page ad, but you may want to do some of this yourself. This is, or 15 businesses are all offering specials. And with that, my mayor's report is over, and that takes us then to... Again, my computer's acting kind of funny here.
Yeah, our internet is going in and out, so there are probably some problems. The YouTube comes, keeps going in and out, but that's probably what's happening.
Takes us to the city's, the city clerk's report. Joanne?
I just have one announcement. City offices will be closed on Monday, May 31st, in observance of Memorial Day.
Thank you. City administrators, ex-administrators.
No report tonight, mayor, thank you.
Department head information questions for Dan and for the chief? The treasurer's report. Mike, there's two warrants tonight.
Thank you, mayor. First time requesting council's approval of warrant number 202126, in the amount of $451,054.87 from the listed funds. Payroll for the period ended May the 6th, the amount of $288,307.05, for a total be approved of $739,361.92.
Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Number one.
Belzak?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistick?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
The warrant's been approved. The next one, Mike?
Next warrant is warrant number 212202, in the amount of $945,226.65 from the listed funds.
Motion to approve. Alderman Vaughn, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Again, any questions? Comments? Number one.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistick?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
That warrant's been approved. Anything else, Michael?
Two quick things. Number one, you should have all received a solicitation from the, our auditing firm, just to please respond to that, so they don't have to send out second and third requests at your convenience. And lastly, if we can direct Administrator Vanna as a working and toward next year's budget, if he can work, since the may, position of mayor is so popular, if we could work that in, we might be able to rebate some real estate taxes next year.
I knew that was coming, Mike.
Sooner or later. Any committee reports? Do any of the aldermen have reports for the council? Alderman Kenny?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, the Police Committee approved the minutes for the July 2020 meeting. Our next meeting, our next Police Committee meeting will be held on Monday, June 21st, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. across the street in the police training room.
Thank you. Alderman Belzak?
Yes, the next Municipal Services Committee meeting is scheduled for next Monday, May 24th, at 7:00 p.m. in council chambers.
Thank you. Alderman Sullivan?
The next Administrative Finance Committee meeting will be held on Monday, June 7th, at 6:00 p.m. in the conference room upstairs in the city hall. And the next Economic Development Committee meeting is on Thursday, June 3rd, at 7:00 p.m. in council chambers.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, mayor, that was July 20th, 2020.
Okay, thank you. Questions and comments, agenda-related? I believe there's only Mrs. Pecknick in the audience. I don't think she has any questions regarding our agenda, unless you do.
I have one question.
Sure. Not forwarding.
My name is Alita Pecknick. Do I need my address? No. I just have one question for the chief. I've been reading about the catalytic converter problem, and I know that Downers Grove has had more problems than Darien, and I was wondering, what is the update on that? And how is, how are you, are you doing anything proactive to avoid that? It seems like cars that are left in driveways during the night, they just come and snip it out and it's gone. So I'm wondering if that's become a problem in Darien and it's solved.
We have not seen that as an increase, and it's pretty simple. You can have a bad re-operated saws off, cutting the front part of the muffler off and the back, backside of the catalytic converter off, and you're gone. And catalytic converters have some very expensive parts in them, the metals in them are expensive, so that's why they're being installed. And it's getting quite popular. So far, no, no big problems here.
Okay. And why are they so expensive to replace?
They're very expensive parts. They used to have, I can't remember what the metal was in them. I want to say platinum, but I don't think that's right.
Yeah, it's like a fine, like chromium, different nickel, different expensive stuff. So it's like, why is gold expensive, right? Same thing. There's gold, you know, chunks of gold in your wiring and telephones. So yeah, there's little minerals and little rare earth metals in there that are worth quite a bit of money, so only option, electric car, I guess, no.
So they thieves just resell them, is that it? Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We should be bowing to you.
Takes us to old business there being none. We move on to our consent agenda. Item A, consideration of motion to approve a resolution accepting proposal from IP Communications for the equipment installation, configuration, and training of a new phone system at city hall and the police department, in an amount not to exceed $56,593. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from AIS Incorporated for the IT equipment and labor required for the new phone system in an amount not to exceed $23,400. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city administrator to approve a contract with the lowest-cost streetlight electric provider for a bid conducted by NYMEC on June 8th, 2021. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Alderman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Kenny. End of vote.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistick?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
The consent agenda's been approved, takes us to new business there being none. We move to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Do any of the aldermen have something they'd like to... Alderman Belzak?
Yeah, I just want to make one clarification regarding the parade this summer. It's going to be on July the 5th, which is the Monday after July the 4th.
Anyone else? Mary?
I just want to congratulate all the graduates that things seem to be kicking off tonight. Graduation was at Hinsdale South High School. Coming up soon is Downers Grove High School South and Lamont High School, which serve our Darien community, along with lots of other private high schools and our junior highs, and just wishing all our graduates all the best on clearly the most unusual academic year in probably all of our history. And also, you know, any celebrations that take place, whether it be prom or family gatherings for everyone, just to be safe and, you know, stay healthy.
Thank you. I've got one item that I decided to share at the last...
I've got one item that I decided to share at the last moment. I got a phone call Saturday from a message, phone message on my phone, from a gentleman, Darien resident, who indicated through his conversation, a message that he disagreed with my vote on the apartment building, and he stated some reasons for that. And he did so in a very respectful manner. Today, when I came into City Hall, I gave him a call, and we had a wonderful conversation. He, after correcting some misperceptions of what we did that night and why we did what we did, he, for the most part, pretty well agreed that what we did was right. And he went on to explain how surprised he was that the mayor even called him back. And I told him I returned phone calls, and you can always expect a phone call if you call me. And he said, made the comment, he said, "You probably get some really nasty emails and phone calls from people." He said, "Especially after this vote on the apartment." And I said, "That's true." He said, "You know, I try to be respectful because my mother always taught me to be respectful, and I share that with you," because we did get some of those email messages. And here was a man who called me to disagree with me, and at the end of our conversation, he kind of came around, and he did it in a very respectful manner, which I really appreciate. And we got further with, in that conversation today, than any of the people who sent a real negative email. And so I just wanted to say, there are a lot of really good people out there who will disagree with you, but they'll do so in a very respectful manner. And I wanted to say thank you to him. I won't mention his name, I don't want to embarrass him, but I want to thank him for that phone call. Anything else? Okay. Motion to adjourn? Alderman Vaughn, seconded by Alderman Kenny, on the favor.
Aye.
Or adjourn? Thank you.